Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session of May 26, 2015. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I say we look like I did state any may draw. This is a single word that prevents it from my government.
First item on the agenda is to approve the work session agendas. Are any changes need to be made?
Motion second.
Motion is second to approve the work session agenda. Any discussion seen in all those favor signatures, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting. And for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1501, we welcome the public to attend county work sessions. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So first item on the agenda is to review the regular meeting agenda. Madam Manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Moving down to financial reports with item B, approved, disapproved, May 21, 2015 expenditure report. Linda, do you have that prepared?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In front of you, you have an expenditure report in the total amount of $547,549.21. This is for the period ending May 21, 2015. Included into this packet is a total of $380,875.23 in AP checks, which includes a check to Wright Express in the amount of $23,993.98, and this is for April fuel. There's a check in the amount of $32,536 to Hub International Insurance Services, and this is the annual volunteer fire department's insurance premium. And there's a check in the amount of $17,740.20, and this is to Southwest Concrete and Paving for the Chip Sealing Special Projects at the Road Department. And a check in the amount of $14,608.59 to Engineers Incorporated for engineering services for the North Hurley Saw project. And also included is pay period number 10 in the total of $206,673.98.
Cash flow analysis?
This is for the month ending March 31, 2015, and the actual cash balance at June 1, 2014 was $2,379, wait, $2,379,621. And revenues to date are $6,234,110. Transfers to date are $1,268,910 out. Operating expenditures to date of $2,241,562. And salaries and benefits here to date of $4,371,263, leaving us an actual cash balance at the end of March of $731,997, with a surplus, a projected surplus of $29,059. In the Road Fund, the actual cash balance at July 1, 2014 was $120,460. Revenues to date of $489,051. Transfers to date of $333,216. Operating expenditures to date of $201,382,63. Salaries and benefits to date of $948,057, with an actual cash balance of negative $206,713. But the second half of the cash transfers took place in this month of May. But they projected cash balance at the end of the fiscal year of $205,859. In the Correction Fund, the actual cash balance at July 1, 2014 was $26,163. Revenues to date of $805,690. Transfers to date of $835,132. Operating expenditures to date of $463,712. And salaries and benefits to date of $1,457,191, leaving us an actual cash balance of negative $253,918. And again, the second half of the cash transfers took place this month of May, leaving us with a projected cash balance of $21,158.
I'll be working on the cash flow analysis and combining some things, and it'll have a little different look in the months to come, so if it's missing off the next leading agenda, that's why, we're gonna be changing it up a little bit.
It is a little cumbersome.
Yes, it is.
It could be a little more concise.
That's exactly what we want to do with it. Moving on to new business, item D, appoint Michael Dubois to the Grant County Echo Watershed Board to replace Joseph Mondregone.
Question there for Commissioner Romo. I assume he was the guy that was left off the initial list?
Yes, sir.
So we didn't re-
He was on the original list, and we just went with the top nine, and he was the tenth. And unfortunately, we've been missing a very good member, Joe Mondregone. You know, he's been our member since the existence of the Echo Watershed Board, but he's been moving out of town, and we're gonna miss him. We really are. I think our whole community is gonna miss him. He's been very active and involved in many functions and groups.
Has Mr. Dubois been contacted? He was willing to serve?
Yes, he actually sent a letter last week after we found out Mr. Mondregone was leaving.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to contracts and agreements. Item C, approve, disapprove, Agreement A 1510 MOU between the Town of Silver City and County of Grant regarding the purchase and sale of gasoline and diesel fuel. This is an agreement with the Town of Silver City to allow us to purchase fuel at their fueling station that they just put in at their Office of Sustainability. And this will be a considerable cost savings to the county to be able to utilize that pumping station. So we'll be working with them, if this is approved on Thursday, to get them all the required information and get set up in their system. Any questions on that?
No. Good deal. You want a Pope Street check?
Yes, sir.
This can be a few cents over the crater.
Yes.
Okay.
And of course, you know, we don't expect them, if they're out of town, they're obviously, you know, the resident deputies are not gonna fuel there, or, you know, the Road Department is not necessarily always going to fuel there, and we will-
We'll give you a gap, yeah?
No. And we'll continue to keep the Wright Express cards as well. But everyone will be asked to fuel there for cost savings, and it's only in their benefit that'll help their budget out a lot.
Will we be able to know what our price is?
Alex says yes. That's the way he explains it to me, but... Because it'll be on whatever they purchased it, plus the few cents over, and he's supposed to get that to me.
On like a weekly basis, or load by load?
Load by load.
Average it back, or something?
He said each, well, depending on, well, it'd be on a load by load basis whenever they get it. If that price changed, then he would be getting us the price.
It will change.
So each time it, well, that came out backwards, but each time they get a load of fuel, depending on what the cost, he is supposed to get that information to me, so we know what it is. And if it was, for some reason, not cost effective fuel over there, then we wouldn't wanna do that, but it should be.
Should be the best of both worlds, sir. We'll see.
We will be adding an item D to your agenda. I guess that's D. It is an agreement with, Agreement A 15-11, State of New Mexico Children, Youth and Families Department Agreement Restorative Justice Grant in the amount of $73,161. We just received this after we printed the work session agenda. And this is for the restorative, mhm, well, actually, it's F.
Okay.
It's F in your book. It's restorative justice agreement that Bianca facilitates, so they were awarded $73,161 this year. Any questions on that? Moving on to resolutions. Item G, approve, disapprove, Resolution R 15-13. This would be fiscal year 2016 preliminary budget approval. And that's actually on your agenda to go through, or do you want me to go through it now?
I think we oughta try to hit the highlights now, so if we have any questions on Thursday, we can-
Okay.
...go by getting that.
There's a summary sheet in front of you in the general fund. The projected ending cash balance as of June 30, 2015 is $2,184,956.
That's the 401, that's his total?
Yes, 401, yeah, it should say general there, not total. Budgeted fiscal year 16 expenses are $9,747,747. Budgeted revenue, $12,512,738. We have transfers to other funds in the amount of $2,439,681, leaving a projected ending cash balance of $2,510,266. Our required reserves are $2,436,937, leaving us a projected surplus of $73,329. The expenses were left relatively flat. I did not budget any capital expenditures. The increases are due to a budgeted 1.5% COLA, as well as we budgeted a projected 10% increase in health insurance premiums. If we're fortunate, it won't be 10%, but we budgeted that in as well. Revenues, we tried to be very conservative with the revenues as far as gross receipts, property tax. I've worked with Raoul and getting the most current copper and property tax numbers. So basically relatively flat budget in the general fund. Moving on to the Road Fund, which is Fund 402. Projected ending cash balance of June 30 is $205,859. Budgeted expenditures, $1,672,86. Budgeted revenue of $1,182,783. A transfer in from the general fund of $458,343, leaving a projected ending cash balance of $174,899. Our required reserves is $139,340, leaving a cash surplus of $35,559. Moving on down to Fund 460, which is correction. Projected ending cash balance at June 30, $21,158. Budgeted expenditures of $2,667,298. Budgeted revenue of $1,146,000. A transfer in from the general fund in the amount of $1,500,140, leaving a zero cash balance. Those are the major three funds, all of them left, basically exactly like the general fund, flat, no capital expenditures.
Okay, any questions? We'll have to vote on this Thursday, so got your homework.
Next item on the agenda, item H. Approve, disapprove, Health Plan Claims for the period ending May 31, 2015. We have a total of 86 claims, 81 claims to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $52,413.69. Five claims to Hila Regional Medical Ambulance Service in the amount of $3,654.57, a total of $56,068.26.
And I wrote that probably going to need to add Silver Door softball in there somewhere.
Yes, Janice has a call in to the coach, and if we can get that team here, then we will add a proclamation onto the agenda, so we'll be waiting for that call.
All right. Nice short agenda. Okay, so we'll stand for county reports. The hospital's not here today, I kinda expected them, so Mike?
Chairman, I respectfully submit my report from May the 12th through May 21st. Item number one, status remained the same. Item number two, we currently have five vacancies, two full-time and three part-time vacancies. Item number three, status remains the same. On our training update, item number four, Officer Ferrante will be scheduled training for the end of this month, and then I'll have one sergeant and three officers attending training at the end of June. On our inmate support program, subgroup has been meeting, we're outlining coordinator position, operational programming and budgets. On the recognition program, we did our awards last week and a half ago, and now we are accepting nominations for Employee of the Month. Detention statistics, Grant County detention average daily population for this reporting period is 63, nine more than last month. High population males is 52, eight less than last month, and high population females 11, one more than last month. So for this reporting period, we had 63 inmates booked into the facility, and that was five less than the last reporting period. This shows a slight decrease in activity. Average length of stay for the reporting period is 5.87 days. What I included is a snapshot, if you have any questions, it's something new that I hadn't put in there for you, but the reason I wanted you to do it, so you could look at it to see the demographics and the population, and it also goes by ethnicity, by race and age group. And I think one thing that came to, stood out for me was if you'll look on the bottom on the age group, what we're having the issue with is population between the age of 25 and 34, and that is consistent with what we have in the facility. So if you have any questions, please let me know, but I wanted you to have a snapshot of that. On item number eight, our monthly arrest totals, and again, this is for the month of May of 2015. Silver City Police Department had 63, Grant County Sheriff Department had 16, New Mexico State Police had 12, Barrett PD had nine, Santa Clara had three, Hurley had three, and zero for the game and fish. Item number nine, detention, we conducted 12 district court transports, 18 Division One magistrate court, Division Two magistrate court had one, Silver City Municipal Court had one, and we had seven medical transports, for a total of 39 total transports for that month, for this reporting period. And our jail utilization and occupancy levels, we had 12 felonies, 27 misdemeanors, 26 probation violations and warrants for a total of 65. Total hours in custody is 8,028.43, and the sentencing also shows a decrease as compared to last month.
My report, sir. Take your mind.
You're welcome, sir.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only a couple of things on, I'm gonna meet with ASA, I think tomorrow at the courthouse. We're gonna try and meet from 1:00 to 3:00, try and go over the previous scope that was issued, I guess it was almost two years ago now, for the repairs on the courthouse, and see where we have to go from there. Hopefully, hopefully that can be done ASAP, and so they have additional engineer to potentially give us a second look on what has to happen at the courthouse, so. The only other thing would be the ISC meeting, it happened last week. We were able to raise some concerns about funding and the control of ISC on the funding, the restrictions on potential long-term bonding for a potential diversion project, and so they were in agreement, we did get some additional comment from one of the commissioners. He's actually, I think he's Executive Director for either Burnley or County or City of Albuquerque, Mr. Sanchez, and he was, he had some same, the same concerns about how the JPA would restrict long-term planning and long-term funding for not only diversion, construction and design, but operations and maintenance after that, so. So hopefully we'll get another version the next week or so. Myself and of course our attorney that the Hill of San Francisco has, Mr. Dimenici, he's gonna be working again with their attorneys, and Mr. Sanchez kind of offered up their bond attorneys also, to try and get some language in there that would make it easier for the cap entity to be able to actually design and construct a project, so. I know that Abby did have some questions, I gave her the contact information for the attorneys that have been working on it, and so hopefully all those things will get worked out. They do have another date of June 9th to try and pass the JPA from the Interstate Extreme Commission. At that time, it'll come back to the local bodies for passage through resolution. And, but I'll, hopefully I'll have a draft this week, so I get it out to the commission. I know that the commissioners, I'm assuming, would have some questions also, and we can certainly discuss those in the next, the next work session. And because resolution will have to be passed, they're setting a deadline for July 3rd, for July 3rd before, so they can move forward with everything they need, excuse me, from the Bureau of Reclamation.
So we'll see it in our only meeting in June, I assume?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, leaving a pretty short timeframe for, for passage from, I guess, for every entity that wants, that would like to join, and so hopefully we'll get all, everything worked out before then. If the commission has any questions, now, I know I don't have a final draft for them as of yet, hopefully it'll be a couple of weeks before they even go to, back to the Interstate Extreme Commission, at least one week.
I've already reiterated all my questions through Abby, so. Okay, hopefully we'll get answers through that.
And if you'd like, and hopefully I can get those same questions, if we can't answer them, we'll try and get somebody here that can answer them.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're just putting finishing touches on the Chip Sealed Roads we're gonna do, we're gonna start Monday through Thursday next week. We should be done with ours by Thursday, and then we'll jump over to Barrett and get them guys done over there that we didn't get done last year. I have been feeling some calls, and Randy was just telling me he's getting some calls about people on that bypass road, I guess, since they've got that opened up, them trucks are using their jake bricks on there. They're asking to put up some signs prohibiting that, and I'm kinda gonna revert them back to the Highway Department, because during that construction phase, construction period that's going on with that bridge, NMDOT has pretty much got that road back in, back in their name right now, so I'm gonna see if they'll act on it first, see what they suggest to do. And that's about all I've got.
Any news on the Cemetery Road at Hanover?
I haven't heard anything from them.
If you get a chance, you might call Tom and see what his time schedule is, 'cause it's not gonna be long before we get into rainy season, and we're gonna start getting calls.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did have some question on that road, at the Hanover Cemetery. I had some questions asked of me on how are we gonna handle flooding because there's no culvert on it? Is that correct? I haven't been out there to see it.
No, there's a creek crossing there. What we did, we just poured a concrete little water crossing going across it.
So there's a concrete-
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. But that only drains up there from those houses.
Just from the homes?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, it doesn't look like there's ever been much water go down through that.
The only way is everybody thinks they're a contractor when they see something like that, so.
Yeah, there is a concrete crossing that goes across there.
Okay. I'll go out there and look at that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Beattie?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't have much, the buses ran pretty much all weekend for the Blues Fest. I don't have those numbers, obviously, 'cause we're gonna get those today. We're also gonna work this week with the rodeo folks to see what we can do about that, helping them with traffic, and also the sheriff, you know, asking us to help there, because it just helps with traffic. No fires, that's good. I'm gonna try to get Mr. Gabe Hogue in here, hopefully, if not this Thursday, but first week, then only beginning in June, maybe go over another weather pattern. As you know, we, everybody in the state's getting rain, Silver City's not, but the Hila is, so we'll just see where we go from there. We're still in a moderate fire danger, so I just want people to make sure that they understand that and be cautious, you know, whatever they're doing, where they're working with, you know, yard equipment and so forth and so on. Justin and I are gonna meet with the new shooting range board this Thursday, go over some issue, you know, some things with them, what are their goals and what we expect from them, and get something out of them. Other than that, business is usual everywhere, unless you have any questions, that's all I really have.
Any questions, Phil? Okay, thank you. Linda, you're done for the day?
I'm done.
Sure?
Commissioners, as you've all aware, we had a busy weekend this weekend with a Blues Fest in town. I spent the day out there Saturday, and they were pretty busy out there. Nothing major happened, glad to report that. We had a good presence of law enforcement there at the event. We are now preparing for the rodeo. There's been discussion on traffic control for the rodeo, we're still trying to work that out. I'm not sure where we're at with it, I need to get with the state highway and the state police and see how we're gonna deal with that. I know that we're depending on Corre Caminos to help us out, with traffic, I mean, bringing the people in and out of the rodeo ground, so that should be a plus, but we're still not sure how we're gonna deal with the, when the rodeo is done in the evenings, how to get the traffic out of there. The guys have been extremely busy, and time is coming for Cobra's graduation this week, we're also preparing for that. And just been a lot of parties going on, with graduation parties, and that has kept our staff really busy. I know the convention center had some problems this weekend with some parties, so we're just keeping an eye on that stuff, but other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the chair? No? Thank you, Chair. Mr. Sessner?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members, department heads, elected officials. We'll make it short and sweet, I really enjoyed it, it's gonna be short and sweet. For starters, I wanna thank my staff there, doing a heck of a good job, and we went ahead and Kerry Powell, now she's my Appraiser Four, she went from an Appraiser Two to the Appraiser Four. And we have one title examiner's position open at this moment, we'll probably have interviews come next week, and two Appraiser One positions open also, so we will have our interviews next week from that also. June 1st will be the last day for anybody to contest their valuation. We're still accepting the 65 years and older veterans, 100% beds, head of households until June 1st. I'm sending my chief deputy to a sales ratio analysis class in Roswell, with a gentleman by the name of Randy Kincaid. He's, he used to work for Property Tax Division, now he's the chief there in Chavis County. And we've been kinda keeping an eye on their mapping department, their GIS and so on, so it's been very educational, and we're learning a lot from them. Yeah, I did speak with our county manager about our numbers, we will certify come June 15th, and I guess the number that we got, that we don't have for sure is state assessed properties. That won't be, come into effect until we file all our numbers on June 15th, so we'll know what the state assessed numbers are on that. And that's pretty much it. Any questions there, Mr. Chairman, Board?
Questions for the Sessner?
Your form.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we've still been busy collecting those taxes, as you can see on the report, the nine-day period, we collected $163,000 for the general fund and $17,764 for the debt service, for a total collections of $180,852.32. Fund and $17,764 for the debt service, for a total collections of $180,852.32. We've been staying busy and trying to stay ahead of it and still lagging a little behind with the posting of the solid waste, you know, billing and stuff, as they've grown exponentially in that department with the bringing in of new accounts and so on. And the girls have taken over a lot of the posting. So we've been fairly busy in there. So unless you have any other questions?
Any questions received? No, sir? Thank you. Rob, anything going on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Questions, I don't have any.
Okay. No report from the manager? Okay, anybody want seconds? All right, we are going to add a couple of things to the agenda for Tuesday, the CYFD, hopefully, the Silver Girls. And with concern to the commission, I think, I know you guys chose not to have the executive session when I had to go to that funeral, to go over the manager's goals. Could we add that to Thursday?
You bet.
Okay. Good. So that being said, I take a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else. One wants.
Second.
All those in favor, sing five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.